Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Our Father which art in heaven, once again we assemble ourselves in the seat of government of Cartersville, Georgia, to do the business of the city. Once again we lean and depend on you for wisdom, guidance, and understanding. Bless us, oh Father, as we go about doing the business of the city, and we'll be so grateful. We ask thee's blessing in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District Court, please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Tavering, Ward 6.
Here.
About that, the family's all home for Thanksgiving. We will approve the council meeting minutes from our November 2nd meeting. Council have had an opportunity to look these over, and now would be the opportunity to make any corrections or edits to those minutes. If there are none, a motion is in order, and we've got a motion to approve, and we've got a second. All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Menino, please get us started with Z 2304.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed rezoning of approximately 3.2 acres to the RSL zoning category. Approximately 6 acres was zoned RSL for residential senior living development back in 2018. With that, the applicant's looking to expand that area to do one of their planned developments, and the current portion that's being rezoned is zoned MU. The MU zoning portion of it does allow up to 8 units per acre on it, and again, they're wishing to add this acreage to the existing RSL zoning, or residential senior living zoning, to expand the proposed development they're looking to do. With that, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this. There was some concern from some of the citizens in the area about the existing traffic situation that they're dealing with out there, getting out onto Tennessee and 41. But with that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning.
Just for clarification, to begin the public hearing process, you and I spoke earlier, and you just mentioned that, you know, part of this is already zoned residential senior living.
Correct, approximately 6 acres.
And another part is already zoned multi-Us.
Which does a...
And so, really and truly, the applicant is, again, out of simplicity to have a single zoning, but they could essentially do very similar to what they were doing now with even having to come before us.
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions for Randy at this time? Thank you. That being the case, we'll open up a public hearing for Z 23-04, and ask anybody wishing to speak for against to do so at this time.
Good evening. Brandon Bowen, 15 South Public Square, Cartersville. Happy to be with you all again. I represent Winsong Properties. They are the proposed developer of this property. Winsong does Class A senior, active senior adult, active adult neighborhoods throughout North Georgia, and they wish to do this one in Cartersville. I think it'll be a great addition to our community and to that area, north of the Home Depot area, north of Gentilly. As, I've got Mark Carruth here, he is the principal for Winsong Properties. He'll talk to you more about their product and what they do, but one point I would like to make, as you've talked about with Mr. Menino, the property is already zoned for this on the right side, on the left side, it's zoned MU, which is more intense than what they're asking to do, both because, both because of the number of units, but also because MU's not age-restricted. What they're asking for, RSL, would be, is the city's age-restricted district, so it's doubly limited, and that's a big factor. I know we had some comments about traffic before, and as I heard them, they were really, you know, "Traffic's bad on Tennessee Street, traffic's bad on 41." I mean, traffic is what it is, we all know that, but what we're proposing is a much lesser traffic creator than what is permitted by right currently. And actually, I pulled the ITE manual, you all are familiar with that, they do studies and they say how much traffic is going to be generated, and for active adult attached residential units, the count, the average count is 3.44 trips per day, that's going and coming. So, with 72 lots, I mean, that's less than 250 trips a day, spread out through the whole day, and because we're talking about something that's age-restricted, generally, it's not at peak travel hours. At the peak travel hour, the ITE manual shows .35 trips per unit, which if you do the math, that means about 25 trips at peak hour, you know, less than one every two minutes. So, it's a very low traffic generator. I compared it, I live in River Shoals, which is about the same number of units, except a lot of them have teenagers, like my house does, you know, so a higher, a higher traffic generator, and, you know, that number of lots just doesn't generate that much traffic. So, that said, I don't think, you know, this is, it's not going to make traffic on Tennessee Street or 41 any better, but it's not going to make it any worse either. And that said, happy to answer any questions, but I'd like to introduce Mark Carruth to tell you more about Winsong and the product that they would like to bring to Cartersville.
Any questions for Mr. Bowen at this time?
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mark Carruth, I reside at 125 Park East Drive, Roswell, Georgia. I'm the owner, CEO, Winsong Properties, have been since we started. We're about to, well, we're right into our 21st year. We started this company to focus on active adult. That's pretty much all we've done for the last 20-plus years. The market that we serve are people that are typically retired. We sell a lot to widows. We typically, our buyer ages around 67. We, we focus the design on single-level living, accessibility issues, because if you're buying a house at 67, the odds are pretty good you're going to have some issues down the road. So, no steps into the house, zero entry into the master shower, wide doorways for walkers, billchairs, rounded corners, I could go on. So, in doing this for the last 20 years, we have learned a lot about that market and what those buyers need. I do think we provide a valuable product for the market. We really like Cartersville for a variety of reasons. One is, there does not seem to be a lot of this product here, that we can tell, and we know that this element of the population does exist, they need this type of housing. Any questions for me? Yes, sir.
Will the price points be similar to your other projects that you've done?
We don't have all the data points in yet, but we see this project being around $350,000. Typically, our buyers will spend about 10% more on upgrades, different features on the house, I would say in the upper 300s. Currently, our product line is from that price range, all the way up to about $600,000. One of the advantages of Cartersville is your land costs are more favorable. We've been predominantly building in Cobb County, Fulton County, Roswell area, and we're 700, 800,000 plus to produce a product. So, we like the idea of being here, we've always tried to serve the lower end of the market with our product, we're not really into the luxury end.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We'll continue a public hearing for Z 23-04. Again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for Z 23-04, and Council, we will take this up for final consideration after another public hearing at our first meeting in December.
December 7th.
December 7th, which, please make note, that is a morning meeting, it'll be at 9:00 here in these council chambers. We'll move on. Mr. Frye, you've got the next couple items, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, good evening.
Good evening.
As a benefit of being a member of Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia, the city has the option to be part of MGAG's natural gas price hedging programs known as member elective price hedging. Since these programs typically have a time limit associated with the natural gas purchases, this is a council resolution which purposes to allow the city manager, the gas system director, or the assistant gas system director to execute the elective forms, transaction confirmations, and any other documents, agreements, or instruments associated with any member elective price hedging contemplated by this resolution. This resolution has been approved by the city attorney's office, and the gas system recommends council approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Referencing the gas system's second agenda item, the gas system is required by state law to become a member, or to be a member, of the Georgia Utilities Protection Center. This is an ongoing yearly invoice of our annual membership fees in the amount of $15,986.57. The amount of this invoice will be equally split between all of the city utility departments that are members of the Georgia Utilities Protection Center. This is a budgeted item, and the gas system recommends council approval of this payment.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
While Mr. Hampton's making his way up, Chair will entertain a motion to add three items to the agenda.
I move.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And Derek, if you are so inclined, let's get through the first three that you got, we may add those two that we just added, okay?
All right, yes, sir.
And then, you can give me five bucks for letting you get out the door a little earlier.
(laughing) The theme work for tonight is Transformers. First item, agenda, was a request for authorization to purchase 500 KVA Transformer. This unit is needed to serve a customer choice win that we had. Due to the customer's desired timeline, we can only find one vendor to provide the Transformer to meet their schedule. The vendor was JCL Energy, and the amount was $43,750, it's budgeted expense, we recommend your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, on the meeting from October 20th of last year, you guys approved the purchase of two 750 KVA Transformers for one of our industrial customers' expansion. The vendor selected at the time has failed to produce those Transformers after a three-month delay.
I'm sorry, what's the name of the company that failed to deliver those?
Transformer Network, TNI.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You said Transfer and...
Transformer Network, Inc., TNI.
Thank you. Just want the minutes to reflect that.
They failed to deliver those Transformers, we've had to cancel that order and delay our industrial customer even further to order from somebody else. The vendor that came through for us can provide those, so what we're asking for you to do is cancel the original approval for those two units, and we will purchase from someone else.
Thank you. Motion's in order.
Motion to cancel original approval.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And in regards to that, the next item would be to purchase those two 750 KVA Transformers for that customer. We've gotten new bids, and Solomon Transformer was the best bid based on price and delivery time, and we are requesting authorization to purchase the two units from Solomon Transformer for a total of $69,774 total, and this is a budgeted expense.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now to that first added item that you have.
Yes, sir. Similar situation, this next added item, during that same council meeting on October 20th last year, we, you also approved us the purchase of six Transformers from the same vendor, TNI. We were able to get four of them from them that were usable and delivered on time, we sent two back because we couldn't use them. They never delivered the other two. Luckily, we had two units on the yard that we were able to finish obligations for the project, which actually wiped out our stock, so now we need a new one to have on the yard for emergencies, and since then, we found out the water department also needs that same-sized Transformer, so we're asking that you cancel these two Transformers, and we will, the next item will cover purchasing and replacements.
Chair will entertain a motion to cancel the Transformer order from Transformer Network.
Network, Inc.
I move.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final item for you, Derek.
Yes, sir. Last item would be the purchase of those two 300 KVA Transformers we mentioned, we went out and got new bids, received three of them, and we are asking your approval to make the purchase from Solomon Transformer. The two Transformers will be $22,984 apiece, forgive my typo on the summary, that number should be $45,968 in total, and it's a budgeted expense.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening.
Allocation of TPD funds.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am here to ask for the allocation of these TPD funds, it's $9,800 for the installation of 19 frames. They're made out of metal, and we've gone through the city's plans to make sure that we're doing it appropriately, installing everything appropriately. In fact, as you can see here on the photo, there was an additional parking sign. The city has already moved those signs higher, so they would be out of the way, and has painted under that, so everything's ready for these to be installed. This is the additional round. TPD funds were used to paint, to power wash and clean and paint under the bridge, and then the next layer here is to add art. This would be rotating art, the cost is just for the frames and installation of those frames, and then Art and Barto would work with the DDA to make sure that that art gets rotated at least three times a year.
I do have a question, I guess more for Public Works, but I'm guessing, you know, I know when we had the mural situation, there was a structural issue where we didn't want anything drilled into the bridge itself. Is there any similar concern with the pillars on this?
Not sure if you guys have checked, I mean, because you're basically just putting screws in there is all there, it's not that deep.
Correct. We did have Stephen Foy come out and meet with our installer and myself, and he approved this. We actually had two quotes, one was to have stands for them, but Stephen, Mr. Foy said it would be fine, so I can go back if we have an additional concern.
Okay, that's fine, that answers the question.
Are there other questions I can answer?
Any other questions? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Roberts, you're up, sir.
Good evening. Portion Recreation is requesting approval for a purchase for the lights at the sports complex on Fields 1 and 2. These were excluded in the last round of upgrades at that park. We will be purchasing these through Sourcewell, it is a purchase entity, but the company that we'll be buying them from is Musco Lighting. The lights are currently in use there, are at Musco, and we'll be able to control all that through our app, and it would allow our staff to be able to do that, no matter where they are. So, the scope of work for this includes removing and replacing existing lights and poles with the new concrete poles, LED lighting, wiring, and the monitoring, monitoring for any lights that are out or any kind of power problem. So, the total cost is $310,000, and it is a budgeted item.
Thank you for that. Any questions on this item? And if there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, Dan, you got the next one.
Yes, sir. The wellness program for 2024, for the last five years, we've been using CHP to do a biometric screening for our employees every February or March time period. I recommend approval to continue on with that program, there is a slight increase in that. We also wanted to offer some SEP challenges and nutrition challenges for employees. Total request is $33,000 for $63 that we may use out of our wellness funds, we get $60,000 from Anthem every year, so I recommend approval, this agreement with corporate health partners for 2024.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forsyth, you've got the next five.
Not because I wanted to. Excuse me. The first item is the instrument service for a water pollution control plant. This is both inline and benchtop instruments, need to be calibrated and serviced at least annually and usually more frequently. This is a quote from the manufacturer, HAWK. To provide that service and calibration is $17,410.65. It is a budgeted maintenance item, recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, so the next item, the land application farm tree clearing. You've previously approved this tree clearing on the city's owned, the city-owned land application farm on Wade Road in Taylorsville. This is an additional 100 acres on that same farm, and the contractor on site has honored his unit price of $1,000 per acre to clear that. This is, like I mentioned last time, this is not a budgeted item, but it is an important item. Revenue, funds are available in the water department revenues to pay for this, and is recommended for your approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The third item, during the installation of the new AMI meters at a local, large industrial facility, one of the city's valves within their vault broke. It is in need of replacement. In order to do that, we have to shut down a 24-inch water main feeding that industry. The water main is about 12 feet below ground, and rather than risking the actuator on that valve breaking and permanently shutting off that industry, we decided to install a manhole with, where we can access the entire valve during operation, which will be permanently installed, and it's a good idea on that valve. We received a quote from CH Kirkpatrick &amp; Son to install that manhole for $13,500, and I recommend that for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Keep going.
Yes, sir. The, the next item is water and sewer specifications update. This is for the update of the water and sewer development regulations and specifications. It's, it's something that's been needed for some time. Have a proposal from Croy Engineering to perform that service at a cost of $15,000. Should you approve this, it includes an engineering services agreement to be signed by the mayor and city clerk, as well as a task order for that $15,000 expenditure. It's recommended for your approval. This is a budgeted item as well.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And finally, the water pollution control plant is in need of expansion due to pending large industrial customers who will be discharging into this treatment plant. We've contracted with Hazen &amp; Sawyer to evaluate that, and they are at the point of design, starting to design that. This request is for Hazen to get through the 30% design phase, perform CMAR, or Construction Manager at Risk, procurement, permitting assistance, surveying, and field services, as well as working with our industrial users to make sure that they can meet specifications as well. This cost is $1,850,000, and again, this is only through 30% design. There will be more to come on this. This is a budgeted expense, and it's recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Motion to approve. Take it.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor, art donation. Don Coredeki family wishes to donate a piece of art, celebrating the arts with Don Coredeki. You can see the statue there that's being created right now in our downtown area. As the mayor pointed out earlier this evening, basically, that's going to be on the Anvers property, but it'll be something that visitors can see, and I recommend approval of this donation.
Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us hanging on?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Why don't we handle that added item, and so we don't have Tom get up and down?
Okay. Mayor, as y'all may recall, about three months ago, we approved a resolution to forward to the Department of Community Affairs recommendations by the North Georgia Water Planning Association, planning organization with respect to amendments to the plumbing code whereby sprinklers, faucets, hoses, and fixtures would have to meet certain standards to be sold in stores, and also, the city would have the right to go into people's homes and inspect those and require them to remove them if they did not meet those standards. The recommendation, of course, from the North West Georgia Planning Association comes with the caveat that if you don't agree with their recommendation, you lose future withdrawals from Lake Altoona, so it is recommended by staff for y'all to approve. Tonight is the first reading.
Yes, so, any questions or discussion?
Basically, this is a play word for we're blackmailed in order to do it.
We'll take this up, this is the first reading of an ordinance, it takes two, we'll take this up at our morning meeting on December the 7th. Mr. Ryan, or finish us out in a good way, would you?
I will do my best. Honorable Mayor and Council, I bring before you tonight the first reading of a budget ordinance amendment for our fiscal year 2023. After the year-end close of fiscal 2023, we are required to adjust or amend the budget for the general fund, special revenue funds, and SPOSS funds. These, by doing this, we will be brought back into the generally accepted accounting principles standards, and we will be brought into compliance. These adjustments reflect the necessary changes needed to bring the budgets back into balance where the balance, where the revenues equal the expenses, and they mirror the actual year-to-date revenues, expenses for those funds. Again, this is the first reading of this amendment.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on this? Again, first reading, we'll vote on the final approval at our meeting on December the 7th. Now for the finance report.
Yes, sir. Again, honorable Mayor and Council will be looking at the September 2023 and comparing it to September 2022. In the general fund, revenues increased over last year by $1.2 million, expenses increased by $566,000. Local office and sales tax have an increase there of about $773,000. Billing permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about $60,000. In the water and sewer fund, revenues decreased over last year by $62,000, expenses increased by $2.6 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues decreased over last September by $6.9 million, expenses decreased by $6.2 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase of gas, increased capital expenses, and increases in the transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $630,000, expenses increased by $494,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase of electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the stormwater fund, revenues decreased over last year by $93,000, expenses increased by $41,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by $314,000, and the expenses increased by $40,000 due to decreased personnel expenses and increased operations expenses. And finally, the fiber optics fund, revenues decreased over last year by $96,000, expenses decreased by $111,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And finally, in our cash position for the month of, for the month of September, unrestricted revenues decreased slightly, restricted cash balances also decreased. Now, SPOSS balances, 2014 SPOSS... Now, SPOSS, SPOSS balances, 2014 SPOSS, $231,991.10. SPOSS 2020 account, $10,684,783.79.
Comments?
Yes, sir. Basically, we're trending well first quarter of the fiscal year. You can see where general fund, it's in better shape than it was this time last quarter, or first quarter last year. And as Tom alluded to, the natural gas, you can see where, you know, last year, the gas prices are sky high, so the profit margins were higher for us, but we're still trending well this year, and we haven't gotten to the natural gas season. So other than that, appreciate all the work Dom, Tom and his true team are doing.
Very good. Any questions for Tom or Dan on the finance report?
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else needs to come for counsel this evening? Couple of quick notes. Want to welcome Alyssa Cordell, who will be taking over as, I was speaking to her, not you, that she is, she's going to be joining city council beginning of the year after Councilman Wren is done with his service to the city, and we thank him for that. Just wanted to welcome you, looking forward to working with you as part of our team. Also, remember Thanksgiving is next Thursday. City offices will be closed Thursday and Friday, so if you've got garbage service or anything like that, wait till Monday. May take Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday for our guys to catch up. Other than that, there's going to be a lot of people working around the city while we're enjoying vacation time, and we're appreciative of them for that and appreciative to be able to continue serving our city as well. So, anything else? Football, you said, is there a football game this weekend? What's that? Okay. Cartersville, yeah, Cartersville plays tomorrow night, so does Cass. I'd offend some people to mention that in the city council meeting, but we'll cheer on both teams, and we'll go from there. We'll end it with go Canes, how about that? Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
They go. Julius, have a good...